Okay.
A call to order, the planning and zoning commission meeting in the city of Bisbee, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Our rule call. Mike Abelin.
Present.
John Bayless.
Here.
David Cobb, I know he's coming. Douglas Dunn, here. Sandy Housman is excused. Nancy Ferron is excused. Mike Schmitzer.
Here.
And Ina is here with Williams and staff. Call to the public, and that is anyone here who would speak on a subject other than the three agenda items before us. If not, we'll move on to agenda item one, which is the public hearing and discussion and possible recommendations to consider a resoning application at eight eighteen Tombstone Canyon, consideration of a request for a resoning application for APN number one oh three dash six one zero dash one two three, located at eight eighteen Tombstone Canyon, resoning it from R three to C three. Commercial zone will be more appropriate zoning for this structure. The city of Bisbee general plan, this is additional information, the city of Bisbee general plan two thousand fifteen identifies the subject parcel as being located within the historic Old Bisbee Planning District. Objective five one I says support land use, transportation, circulation, trains, and urban design improvements that will enhance the historical and cultural quality within this area and that will link this activity center with other areas of the city. Is there a staff report on this?
Yes. Joe did one. It's in front of you. It's the one that looks like this. I'm just going to hit the highlights. He gave a little bit of parcel history. It says for many years, the structure functioned as a public school from nineteen eighteen to nineteen thirty-eight, and the building became an apartment building until sometime in the late nineteen eighties when it became a B and B hotel. The issues and analysis, the proposed use of the parcel conforms with the Bisbee's general plan, which you just, you just read, and maintaining inviting places to live, work, retire, relax, preserve the historic and small town character of this planning area. Factors in favor of the request, Old Bisbee is unique and hard fast zoning rules don't always fit. The proposed use is less intrusive to a neighborhood than a hotel. Our general plan and charrette both encourage infill or refill in the instance it is refill. The proposed rezoning and use is reasonable use of this property. City favor productive uses. Favors against, the proposed rezoning would be spot zoning, which is not optimal from a planning perspective. C three permitted uses include some of that are inappropriate for residential neighborhoods. The recommendation by staff is that in this particular instance, the use of this parcel and structure will enhance this neighborhood, and they, we recommend granting the rezoning request with the limits and proposed to prevent the intrusive C three uses while permitting the historic hotel use of this structure in the future. And there's Joe if he has anything else to add.
Can I just intervene here? Let me show that David Cobb is with us?
Yep.
Okay. We just read your report. Do you have any additions, Joe?
I think, I think that, well, I don't think, I know that the, that you've got the, the existing, pre-existing non-conforming use that had been used for the last twenty-some years, and so the, that is still in place, and I think it'd be appropriate to, for it to remain C three, or to become C three, which would establish the historic use that it's been used for. And, but it would be appropriate for you guys to, to limit the lumberyards and the shopping centers and all this kind of thing, which are never going to be there, but nonetheless, I think it's appropriate to not have those.
Yeah, there are certainly a number of uses under a C three that are not, certainly not.
And, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see those up there.
And how do you propose that we limit those other uses if we approve a C three?
I think, I think it could be, it could be C three with the, with the other ones struck out, so it'd be, it'd be a limited C three, perhaps. I don't know.
Is that possible, Ina?
Mm-hmm. Yep. You can put a condition on the C three.
You put a condition, a condition on C one?
You can either choose C one if, if they're amenable to it, or you can, like Joe said, you can accept C three and then just mark out the ones that are not good uses for that area, and that couldn't be there anyway. So either way you want to go.
Any questions of staff? Okay, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Yes, sure, absolutely. Can I do it from here? I better go.
To the microphone, sorry.
Is the mic on?
Yes, it should be.
Okay, very good. So my name is Sloan Bushvei, and I've been a Bisbee resident for thirty-one years, most of, mostly thirty-one years. So I would be perfectly happy with C one. C three says museum, which, you know, my, my space is an art gallery with a collection that isn't for sale, so I kind of considered a museum, but it is an art gallery, and so C one would make me very happy. I would never want to see a bar, a cocktail lounge, or anything like that in that neighborhood. I want to respect the neighborhood as much as possible, and I really feel like the art gallery, which will be open Thursday through Sunday, eleven to four, will be much less intrusive to the neighborhood than having a hotel where people come and go all, all the time, and also not having a restaurant. We're not going to have any food service, so that's kind of what I'm hoping for.
Questions of applicant?
So you would prefer C one?
Yeah, C one allows me to.
C one has considerably less, or I should say, less options than C three.
Right.
C three has, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but C three has a wide range of options that can fall under that zoning requirement.
But the prior use, Mike, has been, has been a hotel.
Right. So, but if they were converted to C three, C three still opens the door to a lot of possibilities, but then the comment was that you would strike or restrict some of the limitations of C three. So I would feel better eliminating that opportunity and just go directly to a C one.
You guys opposed?
Yep.
Because that would be a more appropriate, and then the city doesn't expose itself to any future litigation, or if you had a pre-existing non-conforming use and was it R three, that now gets removed.
But it was, it wasn't R three, but that doesn't, that R three doesn't cover the hotels.
Right.
That's the pre-existing.
That's correct.
Use, not the pre-existing zoning.
Right. So then if you went to C three, but then striked some other things, you might open yourself up to potential problems where you got rid of the R three, now you moved it to C three, so you struck some things to C three, now you're back in that discussion, just eliminate the opportunity for any discussion at all and go directly to a C one zone.
That's your choice.
That would be my recommendation. That streamlines and cleans up any potential problems moving forward.
We'll get input, then we'll discuss this.
Yeah, so.
Any further questions of the applicant?
So I'll just, C one would be acceptable.
C one, yes, so C one from what I understand is retail, small retail, educational facility, and offices. So I plan to have an office, I plan to have an art gallery, I plan to have a little teeny merchandise section where I sell art books, and I just think that that, as long as I can do those things, which is what I really want to do, I, I wouldn't want to go any further than C one. I want the neighbors and the neighborhood to feel very comfortable with what we're doing there. It's really important to me.
And just as, okay, is, there's another art, the School House project or School Art House, isn't that also C one zoning?
So Central School Project is C one. It was switched from a school to an art gallery, an art studio, and it's C one, school, um, Central School Project, which is in a neighborhood, you know, up near Opera.
So if you had an opening for some kind of event, you had, what, ten spots?
I have ten of my own parking spots. There's a lot of public parking in the neighborhood because the park is right there, Garfield Park, but I would strongly encourage everyone to park along Tombstone Canyon because there's tons of parking there.
Yeah. So the park, I see people in there.
Yep.
Is that part of your parcel?
No, I think it used to be because it was Garfield Park and it was Garfield School.
Okay.
But at some point, I'm sure the school, when it was converted to apartment buildings or whatever it was, deeded that back to the city. That's what I'm assuming.
So it's a city park?
It's a city park, yes.
Okay. Cool. Parks are great.
Parks are great.
Yeah.
And that includes both levels, there's two levels of that park.
That is correct. That's all owned by the city.
If someone said eight eighteen Tombstone Canyon, you're thinking that it's the front edge that is actually a park, but yeah, okay.
Yes.
It's kind of confusing how that.
That's Bisbee. Yeah, are there questions of the applicant? Thank you, Sloan.
Thank you.
I'll go on now and declare a public, a hearing open to receive public input. Does anyone wish to speak, either in behalf or, or against this?
I do. Hi, my name is Deborah Young, and I live at eight oh eight Tombstone, which shares a property line with eight eighteen, so I'm glad to hear that you're concerned about the neighborhood. I'm opposed to it being C three. I think it's inappropriate for that neighborhood. All the surrounding property is R one, and the closest C three is the Circle K, which is zero point six miles away. So I've talked to several of the neighbors, and we're concerned about noise and traffic. We're happy that the schoolhouse inn is, is being refurbished, and it seems like a museum would be a great place, but if you change it to C three and you're no longer the owner, then this, as you've talked about, there's so many other uses that it could have. So I, I really think that another option, whether you could keep it R three and have a special use permit, or change it to C one, but I really think that C three is inappropriate for that property.
Appreciate that. Do we have, looks like there's no one else on there?
Your question is, right, I wrote it down.
Thank you.
Forget what I said.
Do we have any written or telephone comments?
Only the ones that I sent you the other day. Did you want me to?
Well, we have one for the, for the mayor.
Yes, and, right, and he.
And what else do we have?
Um, let's see, you had one from Jane Gaffer, Barbara Jones, and Judy Reyes, who were against the C three, and Mr. Mayor Budge wanted to see if the planning and zoning would consider C one.
Maybe a point of information, Joe, where, where did this, why, why did it jump from R three to C three? Why didn't it, why didn't it initially go from R three to C one? Why do we have this?
How about we close the public hearing?
Close the hearing.
And then you can discuss it, sorry.
Sorry.
Is there any further input on this in terms of the public hearing? If not, then I have it with the public hearing. Now, commission discussion.
Okay. So why did it jump from R three to C three with all those convolutions of opening the door for pool halls and lumberyards and bowling alleys, movie theaters? Why, why did it go from R three to C three? Why did it just go straight to C one?
R three is multifamily.
Yeah.
And it's been a hotel since, since about eighty-nine, so it's been, been used as a C three, because hotel use is our C three.
Okay.
And that's pre-existing and non-conforming. They actually have that preserved use right now, that, yeah, I'm, they're not going to be falling back on that, but I think it'd be a good fallback position for the, for the structure in the future. That's why, that's why I proposed C three, because that's, that's been the historic use, and it's, they have a right to it.
Joe, I have a question, since you brought it up as it's being a hotel. I don't know how many rooms it has in it, but what classifies a hotel from an Airbnb? How many units do you have to have? Is a, is a three-unit Airbnb a commercial building?
Mike, an Airbnb is kind of a modern word, but the B and Bs have a limit of five units, and it's in a, it's in a residential home, and after five, guests can stay there, or five rooms being used, and schoolhouse inn didn't really get into that.
How many rooms did it have? I, I remember it had, had actually fourteen. Oh, okay. I was just, I was just curious.
Were the discussions with commission, then? I guess there's probably, I think consensus is that we want to restrict the, the use. Your proposal, remove it from a C three to a C one, C one has a long list of uses as well. I mean, there's really not a whole lot of difference between C one and the three-three. So how do you propose that we restrict this to, to this, this use? How would we prepare this motion?
You could, you could limit the C three uses to hotel and just, and adopt it that way? You guys can do what you want, you know, mine is only a suggestion.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just asking how to, how to move with it. Like certainly the, the neighbors are concerned with the, the long list of uses that are permitted under a C three and likewise under a C one.
I would propose it, propose using it as a C three, adopting a C three zoning for the property, limiting, limiting the three C, the C three use to hotel, and that's not even going to be used by the, by the Bushveis.
Because they're not going to use it as a hotel.
Right. But, but up to now, they, they're, it's been that use, and that was why I had it.
Could we say limit the hotel and art gallery or whatever?
Yeah.
But if we went to a C one, are the restrictions for a C one much more stringent than a C three is?
You're much more limited on intrusive.
So e- even though, for clarification, C one and C three have very similar uses, those uses within the various classifications become stricter and stricter under a C one. Is that not correct, Joe?
Yeah. And if, if in the distant future, somebody wanted to go back to Old Hill, they could go through this process again and go bring it before planning and zoning. Not unreasonable.
Right. So I think the desire from the public is that the C three stigma is problematic, so why don't, why not make a motion?
I agree, but I just want to clarify the fact that C one permits such things as automobile supplies and drugstores and feeding seed and hardware stores and so on.
But underneath those classifications under a C one zoning, their restrictions under the C one umbrella are much more stringent than under a C three.
Yeah, I'm.
That's what I'm getting at. So we, we're tight, if we go to C one, we're actually tightening the noose, which is what the public prefers. So somebody might be more discouraged if it's a C one to even entertain it, whereas if it's a C three, there's more latitude and the assumption we can do more. So let's just take that off the table, and if everyone wants to go to C one, go right to C one, and as Joe said, if somebody wants to argue it or if something happens, then they reserve the right to go through this process again. But to meet their requirements and appease the public, I would make a motion to go right to C one and bypass C three.
But would you approve it if it's C, C one, but limited to a hotel or art gallery?
You could add that extra layer on there if you wanted to, but that would even further put the noose around the C one restrictions.
Because the difference between the two are, are not that great, so.
I just wanted to say something. I think we're all in agreement of doing what I think you intend to do, but so that we don't limit you. Could you give us a, a, again, a rundown of what you think you might want to do with the property? As you could have small retail in there. Sure. Go ahead. Yeah. So what I would like is to have an art gallery, which has a little merchandise section where I'm going to sell art books, and I'm going to exhibit my art permanent collection of art, which includes, you know, some very, very big-name artists, and because it's my art collection and it's not for sale, I'm really kind of calling it a museum, doesn't have a museum designation, because I don't even know if there's a legal museum designation in, out in, in the world, in corporate America, but I really just want an art gallery with a little merchandise section. There won't be any food service, no one's staying the night, there's no residences, nothing like that. This is very simply an art gallery.
But you're going to have an office?
Yeah, I'm going to have an office, yes, yes.
Would you ever want to sublease some of that space out to another person?
No, that would never, ever happen.
Okay.
If you knew me, you would know that would never happen.
Would you, would you want to put in a small projection theater similar to what the Mining Museum has, and run films, you know, twenty-seat or ten-seat?
Well, I would like to be able to exhibit a film occasionally where we would bring a filmmaker and talk about art, that kind of thing, but if that was prohibited, I really don't care about that. My focus is, is exhibiting art. I think we're all in agreement with what, what you're intending to do with that. I don't want to restrict you unnecessarily, so. Right. No, I understand, I appreciate that. One of my biggest concerns is really that the neighborhood feels very comfortable with what we're trying to do, because we don't want the neighbors to be upset, we want them to feel like this is a wonderful cultural addition to Bisbee and to the neighborhood without ever, you know, impeding on their privacy and the quiet neighborhood that it is. That's really important to me.
Joe, did you have your hand up here?
Yeah, I was going, I was going to point out that Division One specifically says that it's going, that education facility, small-scale retail, personal service use that serves the day-to-day needs of residents of the surrounding area. I think what he's proposing kind of goes outside of that, too. It's not, it's not serving just the neighborhood out there.
You're reading that under C one? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So C one encompasses educational facility?
Yes, it does.
That might be a good catch-all term for.
That's kind of a museum concept here, where people would come in and they'd learn about the art, and they would meet artists and things like that, and we do give school tours occasionally, and, you know, we have our little, our locations downtown, we just gave a school tour for eleven kids and two teachers on Monday. So there's an educational component to this that I thought fit well into C one.
Are there further comments, questions? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we change the current zoning to C one.
Second.
Let's, let's add to this.
Do you want to add to this?
No.
Limited it to.
You can add to it, because I don't know what you want to add, but I just.
Limited it to a, a gallery, or, or museum with light retail.
Joe, does that fit within the C one zoning?
Which?
The C one? Does the gallery and the museum fit within that umbrella? Because what I heard you say is that you felt that it might teeter on going outside of it.
Yes, I think, I think the C one is, is, is a little bit limiting for what they're proposing, but it's, you know, nothing fits exactly either. I don't, I don't want to give you guys that impression either, because we're always having to, to make a decision based on.
I understand, but I want to make sure.
It's always on the edge, everything's on the edge.
I, I want to make sure that you guys understand that going to C one, as Joe just said, there may be something that prevents you, if somebody wanted to complain, that you might be restricted. It doesn't sound, I just don't want you to put a noose too tight around your neck, but at the same time, I want to be respectful of the neighborhood, because the opposite is they're very concerned that C three opens the door to everything. So I think we don't want the door open to everything, but at the same time, I don't want you guys to get strangled.
Right.
I would still, with my motion, propose C one, and if, Mike, you want to add a couple of restrictions.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, C one lets them put up a, an auto body shop, right?
So does C three.
Right, right, and that's what I'm saying.
C one is more restrictive, though, it has a whole lot.
We want to be more restrictive than any of these. Right. His intent is to build a, a museum gallery.
That fits under C one. So does an auto body shop, but under C one, if you went with an auto body shop, there's a whole cadre of other subordinate things that would have to be added that don't, that won't be applicable to this property is what I'm getting at. Just because it's allowed doesn't mean it can be done. There's a whole nother layer of requirements that you have to meet, is my point, and that's what C one does, it restricts those other components.
Mike, would you like to make a?
A motion.
We don't have a second on the first motion.
Yeah, we did. Mr. Ballas, I thought seconded it. Yeah.
So what do we need to do here? Do we need to amend that?
Are, are you wanting to amend the motion, Mr. Schmitzer?
I would like to.
Okay, then we'll just need another, instead of amending that motion, let's just make a new motion.
Okay. Mr. Schmitzer?
I'm going to change the zoning from R three to C one, limited to a gallery, museum with specialty retail store.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll call a vote then.
Do we need to make it, add some specificity to it? You're saying museum, light retail, what did it say again?
I said specialty retail.
Specialty retail. I like the idea of putting in educational, venue, educational facility. I like, go bring that door.
So Mr. Schmitzer can amend his motion to include that.
To, yeah, to include educational facility.
Other comments?
Will you still second that, Mr. Ballas?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, I'll call a vote then. Mike Abelin?
Agreed.
John Bayless?
Yes.
David Cobb?
Yes.
Douglas Dunn, yes? Mike Schmitzer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I promise we'll be good neighbors. Hi, I'm Sloan.
I'm Ted, too.
Yes, I know.
I'm Ted, now.
I'm there. I appreciate it, ladies. Please, I'm a good respect, I'm, I really do. I would never want to do that other stuff.
First question, Joe? I'm starting tomorrow. Thank you. He had to finish up a few things for me.
That's right, you mind telling Beth? I'll do it tomorrow.
Agenda item, agenda item two, which is a public hearing and discussion and possible recommendation to the mayor and council. Consider the update of development standards for Bisbee Arizona Historic District. The Design Review Board continues to set the standards for clarity and practicality, making the work of the board easier, along with the applicants. These new standards provide property owners and the board with concise information and realistic choices for appropriate revaluation and new construction. And what was before us has been developed by the, the Planning Center, which I think has advised us with our general plan, correct?
I don't think this was done by the Planning Center.
It was started by them, but we actually took it, what they used, and they revamped the majority of it. We used their concept that they had given us in two thousand and eight.
Did a lot of cut and pasting.
Pretty much. Well, not this time. I had to actually do that all by hand.
Okay, staff, comments?
This is, this is culmination of a long period of time and a lot of work that individual plans do, not I, but it's, it's been a lot of thought put into this, and I'm really proud that we've come to this point today. This is really a big deal. The, I'm very happy with what they've come up with, with a couple of exceptions that I would like to point out to you guys on the page fourteen. Down below, there's a, there's an asterisk in it, reference to international codes, R of, of work exemption permit.
Is this all, just to wake it up, it seems to be like two different things we're talking about here. One is design review standards and codes, amendments to the code standards, and then you've got this, one's upright and one's sideways on the.
What are you?
We have two things. One is amendment of zoning ordinance, which is what comes up net.
Yeah, we have to break them down into two separate, because if you adopt the update, if you adopt the new standards, then all the codes have to be changed, and that's why they have to be separate, because if you make changes to the update, then I have to go back and make changes to the code.
This preference to the work that's exempt from permit is, it tends to be inappropriate because.
What page is that, Joe?
Fourteen.
Page fourteen, there at the bottom, left-hand side. The city of Bisbee has not adopted the international codes exemptions. We, we amended them, and so it'd be confusing for people to go there, and this is, this is about the historical standard, the standard of the historical district, not about the code, and I think that that should be struck, because it's, I don't think it's appropriate to be in there, and it's confusing for the public if they were to go to those standards and then find out those standards are not applicable to Bisbee.
Okay. Clarify exactly what you're.
And I think that that should be struck, because it's, I don't think it's appropriate to be in there, and it's confusing for the public. If they were to go to those standards and then find out those standards are not applicable to Bisbee.
Okay, clarify exactly where we're at here. I got some.
Okay, page fourteen, it says in the lower left-hand corner, reference international building code R one oh five point two.
Mr. Dunn, I'm sorry, yours did not have that, so in the packet that I gave you is the new sheet that has that on there. I apologize.
Because that was a, that was a recent addition.
Yeah, that was a recent addition, so the one that I printed for you didn't have it, but it should be in that packet that I gave you.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so anyway, this has already been added?
Yes, I just.
Deleted, I should say?
Well, it's been added. It can be deleted. But I forgot in Mr. Cobb's and yours to put in the correct page.
It should be the same, though.
It is, except for that little part, unless I did give you the right one.
Which is the very lower left-hand corner.
Okay, well, maybe I did print you the right one. Hey, I did one of them right.
I believe that to be confusing to the general public, and I don't think it'd be serving them to have that in the design status for the business.
So you're saying the asterisk where it says, reference to international building code for work exempt for permit is what you want to delete, is that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We amended it when you guys, when you had adopted it, when you were on the council, that was amended. And so that, the one that's in the code is not exactly the one that they would use anyway, so I don't think that's the right place to have that.
Okay, so we'll delete that.
Timmy, kinda, we've got a comment in there and just refer to the correct place of what work items are exempt?
Well, they should have that in there.
Those things change, and that, we're gonna, when we read out codes, it's gonna be in another place, too. So it's really hard to do it in there, and something that's gonna last, like this, I hope will last for twenty years or more.
These are the guidelines that the DRB should be following.
These are the standards that they.
They're supposed to be following.
That they're supposed to be following.
Should be.
Supposed to be following, but we updated it to, to, to more current, maybe is not maybe the word I'm looking for. So that it would be more concise for the new homeowners when they go to understand what they need to do. So we made it in more detail, and because the old one was very old, it didn't go into much detail, and it left it wide open. Where this, we're saying, if you do this, this is what you need to do. Here are the examples that we will accept. Here's what we will not accept.
Much more professional than the other ones.
Yeah. Where the other one didn't really say, it just said, no, we don't like that, but it doesn't say that, you know, we were not gonna allow it.
The other place that I was recommending a change?
Okay, go on.
It's gonna be on page twenty-two, on the upper right-hand side, that involves cranks. The fence is the structural side of fence must face the residence, that the decorative side must face to the outside. Are we gonna have rules that people have to wave at each other when they come past, or do their neighbors come out the house and they say, hello, how are you today? I mean, that's etiquette, and I don't think it belongs in the historic status, because historically, they didn't, they didn't necessarily legislate those things, those are things that we're expecting.
Any comments on that? Do you understand? Okay, so we'll want to delete that as well.
I would like that to be deleted.
On page twenty-two, where?
Yeah, on the top.
Third column.
Third column down.
Okay.
Bold. It's only a suggestion, Joe, and not a mandate?
That could be a suggestion, but.
And, and, and looking at my neighbor who's got a picket fence, I am sure glad he put the structural on the inside. 'Cause the structural is awful looking. I mean, he didn't, boards are crooked, overlapped, and everything else. What?
I said, I think I know which neighbor you're talking about.
So, that's what I'm saying. It's a suggestion. It's not a mandate.
That he doesn't call, that was just my suggestion.
I agree with you. But my personal experience with.
Right. It can be however you would like. We can rephrase that to be a suggestion, you know, fences, the suggestion is for the design, or whatever it says. I can't even remember.
Outside of those two items, I love what you're saying, and I'm very proud of what you're saying.
I, I didn't have a whole lot of time to do a review on this, but it sort of indicated that the windows limited a lot of the window designs and door designs to basically wood only. That you couldn't use fiberglass doors or fiberglass windows or vinyl windows.
They wanted to get away from that, because of the, they wanted people to use the wood instead, because that's more in keeping with the, the time period that some of those houses are built.
And that keeps into the, that's also in the standards of the.
Right, of the.
Secretary of the Interiors.
To use wood and not the vinyl or the fiberglass or the steel or the metal or accordion or whatever.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I, I look at my hotel, and it has the original single hung. The original ho, the original hotel had single hung windows, not double hung windows, which is mandated, double hung.
Right, and I don't think double hung should be mandated. I think, I think verticals are on, vertical sliding windows.
Also, in nineteen eighty-five, when Collier Craft came into town, they put in dual pane vinyl inserts. Most people can't tell the difference.
Right.
And I'm looking at, in the design review, is the aesthetic look, not the materials.
And that's true, but they were trying to be in more in keeping of the Secretary of the Interiors rule, rules, and they are the ones that want to see the wood. So they wanted to be in more keeping with their rules, so that we follow the same rules that they follow. Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand.
Like, whatever they mandated in theirs, we wanted to make sure that we did that in here, so there would be no question. And if you went to the Secretary of Interiors standards.
I'm just saying, probably sixty percent of the historic or contributing buildings in old Bisbee do not follow these guideline, window, they don't have wooden windows.
Absolutely. So what it would be, would be what, if, if the window in there is not wood, it could, I'm assuming, Joe, that it would still be like-for-like as long as the windows were in there prior to. If they weren't wood to begin with, would it just be like-for-like?
They should always, they should always come close, every, everything that's done should, should come to a closer standard.
Right, to a closer standard. Thank you.
So it should, so it should be an improvement.
As a general comment, like to your question, being in historic preservation, there are a lot of buildings here in Bisbee that a lot of people would like to acquire and like to renovate. And when they start to get involved with the design review board, design review board oftentimes, and this is a fine line, because when you wanna bring a historic building back where it's a contributing factor, or a national registry is a whole nother lot. Most of these buildings, correct me if I'm wrong, are not on the national registry.
No, they are.
They are?
They are.
The tin shacks?
The ones that are contributing are on the national registry. Even the non-contributing's are one, but they're also considered non-contributing. So they do not contribute to the historic district.
So I guess my point is that they're very expensive to renovate, extremely expensive, possibly three, four, five times more expensive. And so if we're going to enforce these rules, then we also have to understand that any potential buyers who wanna buy these dilapidated homes have a huge undertaking. I mean, huge. And when they realize what they got themselves into, my experience has been that they just walk away from the project. And so then the house or the structure remains in its condition, and in my opinion, that just, it just gets worse and worse and worse. So you've got this conflict of how do we fix up a house that obviously is a contribution, but at the same time, make it palatable for somebody to do it? And I've had experiences where, and not here in Bisbee, but other areas where the, where the design review board or the historical boards just basically say, I don't wanna hear it. It's not our problem. If you don't use this type of metal, if you don't use this type of window, if you don't use X, Y, Z, we are not approving it. And it's dead in the water, and now that particular structure just sits there. So how do we bridge that gap to make everyone amicable in this situation?
Well, unfortunately, we're not gonna make everybody happy. No, I'm just saying. Let me tell you, in six years that we've been working on this.
Right.
Has been at least three different people, three different boards, not the same consistency. And we wanted to make it where it was consistent, not, you know, well, because it's this property. No, we want, in understanding, yes, we can't, you know, it is expensive to do wood, it is expensive to do the other. But there has to be a line where either we're gonna have a historic district, or we're just gonna let them do whatever they want, and then we lose the historic districts. And so the ones that have contributing status now and that are receiving the tax credit for having that contributing structure, if they do work to it, that is the, let's say, metal doors where there were wood, they can lose their contributing status, which is what we tell them if they proceed to do what we, you know, what are standards. Right now, we, they don't have that set in there. Now with these standards, they're much closer to the, the, the SHIPO standards than we have ever been.
What standards?
The, what is it called, Joe? The state.
State Historic Preservation Office, SHIPO.
Yeah, yeah, state. I couldn't remember what it is. It's like SHIPO, whatever it's called.
Historic District.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a state, what, what, interior.
Design or something.
Selective work, interior, too, in terms of national design, okay? There's, other comments? Joe?
If you look at page twenty-six and twenty-seven, where we're talking about the windows, you're not only did you wood them, but specifically did you aluminum windows, too. And if you were, if you guys weren't thinking it's appropriate to put the vinyl in there, then that, that's a potential. But I, I think it would be appropriate to not limit them to double hung windows, because they're rather expensive. And historically, they weren't all double hung windows by any stretch of the imagination. So I think single hung, it would be appropriate for single hung to be inserted in there along with the verbiage it's used.
Is that stated already? Doesn't say, doesn't permit now double hung and single hung?
Well, this one says permitted window styles in Bisbee Historic District, double hung, paired double hung with or without transom, double hung with variation and wooden casement and wide divider between. That's all. It doesn't say anything about single hung.
A double hung for the, both of the windows, the upper pane slides down and the lower pane slides up.
Correct.
Okay. I, I don't know if everybody knows that, is why I'm mentioning it.
All the buildings I own in Bisbee are all single hungs.
Yeah, so we can add single hung in there.
Okay, let's do that, then.
Okay.
'Cause I thought it did say that somewhere, but I, there's a lot of stuff here.
Yeah, there, believe you me, there's a lot of stuff here. Yeah.
Quite honestly, if we're talking about aesthetics, I could look at a, from a distance, I could look at a wooden window and a vinyl one, and depending on the contours of it and the way it's put together, I would be able to tell if it's wood or, or vinyl. And is it vinyl more lasting and?
Right, but there is, like, they can.
They get eaten by the sun there.
Yeah, they do get eaten by the sun. But any window can go before the board. It's the board that is gonna say whether they're going to accept it or not. And they may put stipulation, right.
And that's one of the comments I wanted to make, you know, here. The DRB seems to use this as a way to stop people from doing things. If they like the person, then throw the standards away.
Well, that's either, neither here nor there. I understand that, but we just need to.
That's outside of what we're discussing.
Yeah, that's outside of what is being discussed. So whether they do or do not, that's, and not everybody that's on the board now may be on the board in three years or five years or whatever. So we need to have a consistent and a concise development standards so that those forwarding boards members can contribute and know what they need to look for.
Is, is there any type of verbiage in here that opens the door for exceptions or extenuating circumstances?
Everything can be done, gone through to the board, and if you give them a argument for it, or explain to them why this needs to be done, they can grant that. They can do it with the provision that you, let's say it's a vinyl window, that you match the color of the trim with the window, or whatever. However it looked before, that everything looks the same, as long as it, you can use the vinyl window, but it must look like all the rest of the windows. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if the mullions are compatible with everything else there, and a person looks at it and they go, oh, that looks like an old window made.
Right, yeah.
So it's not a, not an awning window that cranks out.
Right, right. And awning, awning windows, depending on where they are located, it will require DRB. Whether they give them permission or not, that's up to the board or whomever is on the board at that time. But do you know that any time a board makes the decision and an applicant doesn't like it, they are more, they are more than welcome to appeal that decision to the Board of Adjustments, and then they make the final decision, whether they uphold what that board did or whether they move, you know, go away with it and say, yes, they can do it, or they put conditions on what they can do.
So, so this, this packet would be the new guidelines?
Would be the new standards, not guidelines.
The standards. And if a potential client or homeowner wanted to object to a decision, the standard is it goes then up to the Board of Adjustments?
Um, I'm, Joe, I don't know. Does it say in the code if somebody who doesn't like that decision? Or is it just the person who put the application forward can appeal?
I think it's not limited to the people, the person.
Okay, I just couldn't remember.
What I'm saying is, if, if I, if I go before the board.
Right.
And I say, I don't wanna put wood windows in, I'm gonna put vinyl, and they say, no, this page twenty-six specifically says you gotta put wood windows in, and we're going by this.
Mike, I'd like to bring your attention to zoning code three five point five point two, the review requirement and procedure. And B says, on the design review board, shall include such additions that may be necessary to, in order to fully carry out the provisions and intent of the historic district regulations. So they do have, they do have leeway.
Yes, they do have the leeway.
Cast and stone.
No.
I just, again, what I said earlier is that in a, in a real historic district, there is tremendous, tremendous value.
Oh, there is.
For the community. And homeowners that really go to great lengths to bring their properties.
Absolutely.
Up to historic value, those homes historically also command a much higher price. There's no doubt about it, and it has a huge value. When you start to cannibalize things and they start to deteriorate. But in order to bring a home back to true historic value, it costs four, five times more. I just, as Bisbee is starting to get on the map again and new people are coming in, just wanna try to hope that the design review board doesn't say to somebody who wants to buy a tin shack, oh my God, you gotta go find old corrugated, rusted roof metal, because that's what's in here.
Yeah, but that's not, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but sometimes when it's a non-contributing structures, there are more leeway. But like Joe says, that in the code is not changing. They, they can impose any such conditions as they see necessary in order to fully carry out the provisions. So that is not changing in this code. So they can always, as long as the applicant is detailed in their presentation, tells them exactly why they're wanting to use this window, then more than likely, they probably will accept it, as long as that it's what it looks like now, what they wanna change it to. It can't just be, oh, I think I'm gonna change it to this. And that's what, what you honestly don't realize is that a lot of people say that when they bring in their application. I think this is the window I wanna use. Well, we need to be more concise when they are putting things in. Because when you look at a packet, they're trying to go by what they're giving them. And if they are like, well, I think I wanna do double hung windows, vinyl or wood, that doesn't help them. So we need them to be more consistent and concise with what they're choosing to be, to use.
So is there anything in here that says that the applicant reserves the right to appeal this?
Mm-hmm, it says it in the, in the code, in the zoning code. It doesn't say it in here.
It's not in the design status.
No, but it is in the zoning code and.
In the zoning code, Mike, if you get rejected by the DRB, you can go to the Board of Adjustments and.
And do the appeal. And then if you don't like their opinion, you're, you can move it forward to the superior court.
To the state level.
Yeah, to superior court.
So this is a, a well, a well-thought-out guide?
This has been six years in the making and three years of my blood, sweat, tears, and.
So you're a little passionate about it.
I'm a little passionate about it, that's right.
How do you really?
Who's the Board of Adjustment now? Did, did the city council assume that role, or is there still a separate Board of Adjustment?
No, there's still a, a separate Board of Adjustments. Yeah. The only thing the, the council has is the Board of Appeals, and that's, the Board of Appeals for the building code and the Bor, a Board of Appeals for the fire something.
Okay, I, 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 that's where.
Yeah, there's two different ones.
So here's just, and I just happened to turn to this page, this is where it gets confusing. You have a dark sky compliance, but then you have historically, historical fixtures. Historical fixtures are not dark sky compliant.
Well, if you notice in there, it says, what page is that? Because I think it talks about...
On page twenty-six, uh, article number five. Lighting should be shielded to help preserve the city's dark skies and not adversely affect neighborhood buildings, pedestrians, or automobile traffic.
Correct. And since we just updated that, that may have to be updated with that. So thank you for pointing that out.
I just happened to turn to the page and see.
Yeah.
But you understand where I'm going, is that you've got some light fixtures that are his, you get this, well, you made me do this, and now I wanna do this, but now I can't put my neon sign, or I can't put my light on, because it's not dark too.
Actually, we did a separate thing for neon in here.
Yeah, yeah, it's in here.
It's, yeah, I don't remember what page it's on, I'm sure I can find it in the thing.
I didn't do my homework assignment.
But, but no, we addressed neon specifically, because the board felt like it needed to be addressed differently than the lighting fixtures that are on outside of a, a home, or, or a, a different kind of business, like the old-time fixtures. So we did break that apart, and make, so it was easier to, um, conform with that.
And some of the neon has an old-timey look, for lack of a better term.
Right. Yeah, and I think...
This is really an excellent report that you put together, or whoever else.
I had lots of direction, and, and let me tell you, some of the direction was like...
No, I understand.
Like, what do we really want to do?
I'm trying to make a decision on this tonight. I don't wanna be the, the monkey wrench. I didn't read this, to be honest with you, and...
I'm in the same boat.
I have been asked, uh, as a general contractor, by many people to start doing work on their properties. And if no one objects, not that I wanna kick this down the road, I certainly would really wanna sit down and read this with a fine-tooth comb. It seems excellent. I just wanna bring up some questions, or some other things, just for clarification, but I don't wanna hold up...
That'd be very appropriate.
I don't wanna hold the process up in case there's some
We can do that.
year-end deadlines or anything like that, because
Nope.
I wish I had one of these in my years of experience in other areas, where instead of being subjective, it, it's, uh, you can have a baseline conversation based on some real data.
Right, and if you go on the website and look at the old ones, the, the, the guidelines that we use now, they're subjective.
Yes.
So if you compare that to this, absolutely. Take your time, write down questions. This was not done in one day, this will not be done in one day.
No, but it's, it's really important for a lot of people that are coming here.
But if you, if you do have questions that I can address prior to the meeting and have answers to...
I'll just send them to you.
That would be perfect. That way we don't, I don't waste a lot of time, and you don't waste a lot of time trying to figure out what it is.
Can these questions go to the group as a whole, or is that...
No, it has to come to me. Yeah, if you do it to the group as a whole, then that's an open meeting law violation.
Can you send the que, if Mike comes up with a couple questions?
Absolutely. I can, what I can do is, if Mike or you sends me questions, I can answer those questions, check with Joe to make sure I'm answering them completely, and then I can send that out to the board. You just would not be able to respond, like, reply all, you could only respond to me.
You guys are in a unique position to be able to, when you read this, you might, there might be, you know, there's a need to be tweaked, like we're talking about the windows.
Yeah.
That's, that's the time to find those things and fix it before...
Before it goes before him.
Just as, as a general contractor, I've done a lot of work with historic preservation. I, I would ask some leniency, just so I could read this and then come back another next month.
And don't take my compassion for like, oh, you have to do this now. I, I just told them that I was not doing this ever again, ever.
You know that, you guys, you know that, okay?
Especially about dinner, right, and you get it done.
Right.
We can table this to another motion, or we're not, or another meeting, but we're not gonna go beyond that. No, no, I, I, I'm saying...
I don't wanna take another three years, is what I'm saying. Because then there'll be another board who says, no, I don't like what they did.
Do we have a December meeting?
Yes, you do, it's dis... Did I put it on there? Because I don't remember. Yeah, December fifteenth.
I'd like to have our other two board members be able to...
It was, they had, yeah, they were given everything, and, um, yeah, so that would, that would work out great.
I mean, Nancy's very good with...
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
I'd love to have some of her input.
Yeah. Like I said, if you'll email me, and I'll email, I'll send out a general email tomorrow, asking for input, and then any questions you have, or if you want something clearly defined, if you will kind of give me what you're looking for, because there are, you can find definitions to fit whatever. You know what I mean? So I need to know specifics. It can't be too vague where I can't figure out what we need to do.
Just in closing, we have, in the past, we've had some people on the design review board, I think they've just taken things beyond reasonable. And, and what ends up happening is, then it gets ta, here, I am tabling something, but, you know, it gets tabled, and then there's more discussion.
But that's neither here nor there. That's not what your board is to even consider.
But, but that's because there wasn't this.
Right, but...
So, thank you for putting this together. I would make a motion that I get thirty-eight.
We table this to our next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so we move that second. Okay, there's a motion, we table this to our next meeting, which would be December.
Just one teeny bit of discussion before we get to that. Talking about subjectivity, some of these things here, since these are standards, seems to be it has to be pretty, uh, black and white, exactly what it is, and then they put things in here like, less desirable. Less desirable. Do those come from the Secretary of the Interior?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
The Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation are, are... You know, they're, they're not hardened, they are very mushy.
Yeah. So what I can do, too, so that you have something to compare with what we put in there, I'll send you out, I'll send you a long tomorrow with that email, their, their standards. So you can see how big theirs is, and how we condensed it down to forty-seven pages.
Just before the more, uh, Phoenix, downtown Phoenix now has a very vibrant historic district. Do you know if they have something like this in place already?
I bet they do.
And how would we get a copy of that?
I can see if I can download it from their website.
Look it up real quick and easy.
Yeah, we can look it up, and then I can send the link out when I send the other.
I just spent, when I was doing, when I was administering, administering the historic district, I spent a lot of time looking at the, the other design standards that are used all over the country, and, you know, like Charleston and, and...
Yeah, those are real strict.
DC, and all kinds of, I'll just, and it was, it was very educational.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, in doing that, that's why in the commercial part, we now have definitions for, um, what's that called, Joe?
I don't know, it's definitely not, so I can't tell you.
Visible features, like mechanical equipment, vending machines, um, literature racks and things like that, because they were not addressed in the, the guidelines. And so we went to, I think, I processed maybe about ten cities from around the world, or country, and we just picked what we wanted out of, they just picked and chose what they wanted out of those to, to be in here.
Is ADA intertwined in this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because that's where the monkey wrench really gets thrown in, is with ADA.
Yep, but, I mean, we have to be ADA compliant anyway. Yeah, so I mean, it does, it is.
Be historically ADA compliant.
Well, as much as you can.
Hey, one other question, for clarification, makes reference. I mean, this is quite an involved process for any applicant. And you do say that the design review board liaison can work with a property owner prior to application.
Correct.
And who is that? Okay, well, that's...
Right now, it's me, and what I try to do, it, this is, they bring everything in, I talk with them, I, I make sure they have no questions, I make sure I don't, I don't have any questions, that I don't need any more information. Then I have Joe look at it for me to make sure, as he likes to say, I'm, I'm usually right, I just want somebody to tell me that. Um, and then what we have started doing recently is sending that application to the board, and asking them if they need any more information to make a decision on that application. So we've just started that process, because, what was it, six months ago we updated? Or four months ago, we updated the design review board packet application.
Well, we jaked some really sloppy applications, and, you know, you can't be, be the critic in our, in our positions, that, and so then it gets to the, to the DRB, and I say, why did you even accept this? Well, these are our customers, these are our people, we, we all work for them, you know?
Yep.
We're not, we're not here to beat them up, and if you want better, you've got, you know, so by, by sending it to them, and they can, they can be critical, and they can, they can redirect, and it, it's very helpful, and it takes heat off of us.
Right. Now, those don't apply to the ones that return them in last minute, unfortunately.
Do we have a city planner yet?
We have a city planner, but she only works on the workforce housing, and, um, um, the hill, like, things like Hillcrest property and stuff. Um, we do not have a city planner for the other side of it yet. It is on the website, um, for somebody to apply for.
Mike, you're not doing nothing. Mike?
See? You open your mouth, and this is what happens.
You're not gonna do any work for me, so do something else.
I just make the comment, I remember the last DRB meeting that I attended years ago, uh, just reinforces, you know, the, the range of quality of applications. Anyway, one was presented with a PowerPoint, and, you know, real professional. The next one came up, and she had some, some line drawings, and she started off her statement with, well, I don't draw too good, I remember that one. I don't draw too good, so, so anyway, that's, I know that we, we gotta improve the quality of application, and that's certainly good if they could work with you.
Yes, sir. And then we also, too, if you get a chance to look at that packet, you'll see where we had Ben, who was on the DRB, who's also an architect, um, gave examples of how to do a rudimentary drawing of the pro, you know, having the house in the background, and then drawing on that to show what you want. So it doesn't necessarily have to be architectural plans, but it just needs to be where they can read it. They know what you're doing, they know the materials that you're gonna be using, and all of that.
Well, anyway, it is a very involved process.
Oh, yes.
No question about that. We look at this, and certainly it's quite an undertaking, but, and I'm glad that you, you, you are the liaison, this is great.
For right now.
And a motion before us to table this to our next meeting. I'll do, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. I will do a little bit of a table. We go on to agenda item three now?
Do you wanna just table that till you're done? Because if I have to change any of the codes, that'll have to be changed.
Okay, let's have some comments. I have one comment.
Okay, that's fine.
Do we, how do I?
Just, we don't even have to, uh, we can open the public hearing, and then make your comments, close it, open it, close it, make your comments.
I'll go on to agenda, agenda item three, public hearing and discussion, possible recommendations to the mayor and council, consideration of proposed amendments to the zoning code in order to carry out full the provisions and intent of the new development standards for the Bisbee Arizona Historic Home District. The following zoning codes are recommended to be amended and added to reflect the new development standards for the Bisbee Arizona District. And again, um, I just wanted to point out a serious type of graphical error.
Oh, no. Do you know how long I worked on this? No, I'm just kidding.
Where is it?
And you know how many people I've had proof this for me?
Five point three six.
Okay. Okay.
You, you have definitions, and you go down to T, and then you jump from T to H on the second page there.
On five point what? I'm sorry.
Uh, five point three six, we just stored district definitions. The second, second page goes about RSTH. Let me check the numbering. Anyway, you, you got restarted.
You know what? I just thought maybe I just wanna make sure y'all were paying attention.
Okay, well, I, I, I wanted to show you that I have read this, yeah.
I wanted to see if all of you were paying attention and had read it. I will fix that.
You passed.
Uh, you did, you passed. Do you know how many times?
Certainly, it does, it does create a dilemma, so many, what you, what would you do in terms of alphabet? Will you go to AA then?
Yes, it should go to AA.
And then the B and so forth, then you, I don't know.
Yes, it does, and I apologize for that. Thank you for pointing that out, and it will be fixed before the next time.
Are there other comments on this? You wanna make a motion to table this to our next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table this to the next meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's carried, it's tabled. Okay. Is this staff comments? No discussion? Or is there any further staff comments?
Oh, I, nothing about that's on the agenda. I do wanna just let you know it's coming down the pipeline. Um, they, uh, uh, council member Giacominio has had some complaints regarding RVs and trailers and those things. So we're gonna bring that back before the board, or before the commission again, for more input, and maybe change the code, and, you know, fix that. Because it never went anywhere after you all, um, had the DRB say what they'd like to see in old Bisbee, and then it was supposed to move forward, but it never went anywhere. So we're gonna bring that back, and probably in January. And then the other one is the, what is...
No ugly green trucks?
No, I can't accept colors. What is the other one? The percentage of parcel?
Oh, yeah, the percentage of, of, of coverage on parcels.
Yes.
We don't have any restriction on that, we need to have something in place of
Yeah.
every other municipality, to limit the amount of, um, of storm water that we generate inside.
You mean, lot density, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so those will be coming down.
We have nothing.
We don't have anything right now.
I'm lost on that question. You're talking about density of, of the building structure? Or retaining your own water?
No, we're talking about the, how much of, how much of your parcel can be, it can have, can be covered with roofs, or, um, concrete slabs and that?
Okay.
Yeah, so parcel, parcel coverage. So, yeah, so we don't have any rules on that, and so that'll be coming down in the pipeline, probably January, February timeframe.
So we're talking about RVs, as well as, is that we're talking about ordinance?
Yes.
Regulating RVs?
And then, um, uh, to get an ordinance in place for the percentage of coverage of a parcel lot, yeah. Because like he said, we don't have anything.
So like, you're saying pavement, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's separate issues.
Roots, or, or... Roots primarily, but pavement counts on those things, too.
Yeah.
Because it creates, it creates a hard front off, and block water passing.
Yeah.
I would also include a coverage rate on the building itself, at just the stormwater. I know most municipalities are about sixty percent can be...
Yeah. We've pulled from a lot of counties around here, from Coconino, Maricopa, um, there's six other ones that I pulled, and so I'm gonna try to see what best fits us,
Okay.
and then get that out to you all.
So Joe, if you put a concrete RV there?
We can't discuss anything.
We can't discuss anything.
Well, I was just gonna comment, but I was on planning the zoning commission before, I thought that we resolved the RV thing, but I guess we did not.
No, unfortunately, it was supposed to get moved forward by the council liaison, and he has since left, so it never got any further. And I didn't bring it back up, because we, I had the design review board guidelines that I was working on, that I was trying to, so I didn't have time to work on both.
So who was getting brief aggravation from RVs and stuff?
Uh, council member Giacominio.
Well, it's a major issue in this town. I mean, I, I mean, it is a major issue, so I don't know what...
We give complaints all the time.
Right.
And then the council members are getting them, too. You guys got some dreadful ones coming out.
Yeah.
But we've got, well, we're not discussing this.
No.
I'd look forward to that.
Yep.
Uh, commissioner comments?
Great job on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're a good man, or so, okay.
Says the man who didn't read it. No, I'm just kidding.
I would, when I'm wrong, that's for sure.
That's, that's a good man.
Very, very...
Um, let me get that on a recording next time.
No problem. I think it's, it's very beneficial for both the design review board, it's very beneficial for the applicants, and it's very benef, it, I'll just, all around, so very, very good, thank you.
You're welcome. And I will send that out, just, I will send out everything again, and then I'll get, tell you how to do.
Do we have a motion for adjournment? So move.
Second?
Okay.